I will start with a roll call. Good evening. I am Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington. The Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. Robert Canto.
Here.
Rajah Afshar.
Present.
David Saint Germain.
Present.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
On note for the record, regular member Matthew Bandle is absent this evening. Alternate. Polsky.
Here.
Mike Tucci.
Here.
Kyla Zimmerman.
Here.
So, Mr. Chair, you'll need to appoint someone for Mr. Bandle, please.
Yeah, so we were going to do by item, I think, Shannon, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Yep. So, welcome, everybody, to the May 6th, I believe it is, Town Planner Zoning Commission meeting. My name is Scott Halsted. We have, I think, a short but powerful agenda tonight, I guess, is how we'll look at it, right? Liz, would you mind reading the legal notice, please?
Certainly. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, May 6, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Noreen Galvin, application for special permit for detached accessory dwelling unit above existing detached garage at 162 Wood Pond Road in an R20 zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 1 Monteith Drive Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting of the Town of Farmington's website. A copy of this proposal is online or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall, 860-677-675, excuse me, 2325, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 18th day of April, 2024.
Thanks, Liz. All right, we have a couple of new business items. Mike, are you ready to vote on this first one? Fill in for Matt, please.
Great. So, first item, Hayes Kaufman Farmington Associates LLC, site plan approval for patio improvements, ADA parking improvements in repaving parking lot at 838 Farmington Avenue. Welcome.
Good.
Good evening. Evening.
I can't control with this mouse.
No.
Correct.
Nope, it's me.
Okay.
I got you. You talk and I'll point. I'll annotate as you go.
So, excuse me. Good evening, Members of the Commission. My name is Mark Grocky. I'm a Senior Project Manager at VHB. Office is located at 100 Great Meadow Road in Weathersfield, Connecticut. We're here on behalf of Hayes Kaufman Associates for a proposed site plan application for ADA improvements, patio improvements, and general overall parking lot resurfacing improvements. So, just a quick orientation for the site. This is the Naples Pizza Plaza on building number 838 is the building off to the right, the larger plaza, which houses Starbucks, Fork &amp; Fire Restaurant, great restaurant, M&amp;R Liquors, Medical Office, and Monarch Jewelers. And the building off to the far left in the northwest corner is William Rave's Real Estate and Ameriprise. So, really, this project was really predicated because of the ADA improvements, as I understand, as Shannon's hovering over. Really, today, the parking lot's not completely dilapidated, but it can use a little bit of TLC, and especially the ADA spaces themselves. They don't meet current code today. So, the primary focus of this application is really to regrade the ADA parking spaces, bring those up to the proper 2% cross slopes, proper code compliance, and then really piggybacking off that. There's going to be a separate application under the Building Department for some aesthetic improvements of the overall building. I guess kind of more roped into our application is Naples Plaza, really on the south face of the building. Naples Plaza is going to get redressed with a little foyer area and some sidewalk improvements, and then kind of circling back over to the main, where Starbucks is, that patio area is going to be resurfaced and reconstructed. Really, it's kind of, it's just kind of like more opened up, and what we're trying to do is kind of focus where pedestrians want to walk and kind of guide them to a little bit more appropriate walking paths for the site. So, that patio area is going to be fenced off with a little handrail fence area, really to just kind of guide people not to walk through some new landscape improvements. Today, you can walk right onto that sidewalk and there's kind of a little landscape bed, like right in front there. So, that's going to be removed. Patio is going to be kind of reconstructed, and a landscape bed is going to be constructed right, you know, right to that left-hand side there. And you can see the new piano key crosswalk coming up into the plaza. We really want to kind of try to more focus and guide people how to walk into the plaza and how to access the site. So, kind of continuing page up, page north, kind of wrapping around. You know, we do understand the town has MS4 obligations with stormwater quality improvements, things like that. So, granted, this is, you know, it's already an existing site. It's not a new building, but we want to do what we can for stormwater management improvement for the site. So, that kind of pink, I guess, maroon colored area, that's going to be a new patio area, really to focus in on the Fork &amp; Fire Restaurant. And I believe the jewelry, Monarch Jewelers is right in front of that area as well. So, that's going to be a porous pavement area, so to allow for some stormwater infiltration in that area and any overflows from stormwater. You can see the green strips. Those are going to be proposed rain garden features. We're really trying to get what we can out of those features, so any overland flow, obviously, to be sheeted away from the building. It'll enter that rain garden. A couple of yard drains will catch any excess flow, so it doesn't spill over into the ADA parking spots and really trying to do what we can to help out with the town's MS4 requirements with water quality. We did understand that town staff has some comments, just kind of readjust some landscaping from this plan. So, the plan that you have here, we are working with town staff, and we do feel we have a nice resolution to all their comments. So, we're going to kind of rearrange some of the landscaping that's seen from there, but it will be obviously appropriate. We're not, we don't want to block any sightlines or anything like that. And the two black dots you can see right in the middle, just some general site lighting improvements for the kind of like patio area in that location. And then really, as a general overall for the entire site, like I said, it's not dilapidated, but it definitely has a lot of alligator cracking throughout the parking lot. So, the owner wants to do what they can do to mill and overlay the entire parking lot surface. We're going to, once all that milled pavement's going to come off, it's going to come in with a brand-new overlay pavement, asphalt surface, restripped entirely throughout the site in all the parking space. Striping is going to match exactly what's there today. And the landscaped islands will all be kind of redressed, recurbed, re-improved. And you can see kind of off to the left, those two landscaped islands also. We're going to propose a couple of breaks in those curbs, just to kind of get what we can for some more infiltration of stormwater in those locations. So, really, like again, a nod to not only improve the ADA spaces, regrade those, kind of do what we can for stormwater quality, and kind of dress up those couple of landscaped spots right there. So, not a whole lot to it, but it is a substantial improvement and an investment for the plaza itself. And really, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any, and I know Shannon wants to read a report into record.
Well, certainly so. As Mr. Grocky referenced, there's the engineering comments, which you all have received.
Yep.
And then there is a response to the engineering comments that came in on Friday that was posted to the website for access for the commission that addressed all of the comments and provided responses to the comments. And then we had follow-up dialogue with both the project manager, specific to the project, as well as the property owner. And there had been some outstanding questions regarding comment 13G, which, as Mr. Grocky referenced, some modifications both to the patio areas and the landscape islands in this vicinity in the front of Fork &amp; Fire. So, basically, the width of these islands, landscape area will almost double. They're six feet now. They're going to be somewhere between 10 to 12 feet. So, it'll increase our stormwater management and also reduce the patio area, which, as you folks saw from my parking analysis, is necessary. Same thing with the patio area in front of Starbucks. This area is six feet. It's going to increase to 10 feet, leaving 16 feet from the face of Starbucks to the fence line that Mr. Grocky referenced. And there's existing catch basins. Obviously, the stormwater, everything discharges to the north into a brook prior to discharge to the Farmington River. There are two catch basins to the north, one in the vicinity here along this bay of parking and one just behind the building in this back access drive area. And they are agreeable to implementing some type of best management practice from a stormwater standpoint, depending upon what that existing condition will allow. This embankment off the north on this north end is quite steep. We don't want them touching that embankment. So, it's stable, and we're going to leave that alone. So, whatever will be done will be an in situ type of treatment that whatever we determine can fit. But the owner is agreeable to that. And then the final element, we're, these, as Mr. Grock reference, all the landscape islands will be dressed up. So, there's going to be new curbing as well as some type of planting in these islands. Apparently, the owners indicated that they need to not only be resistant to snow and heat, but delivery vehicles and customers running over and into said trees even, which I was surprised. So, he was hesitant to spend a lot of money on trees, so we're trying to figure out what a nice compromise is, so it's just not mulch there. So, it'll probably be some type of perennial that is going to be relatively easy to maintain, but offer some type of visual interest and color to the plaza. So, but he's agreeable to working with staff on that.
All right. Thank you, and thank you, Shannon, for the updates. We'll turn it to Commissioner Questions. Bob?
I'm good for right now. Thank you. Rajah?
Thanks for your presentation. I think, Shannon, you can, one of the items for consideration was the maximum seating capacity of the restaurants that we need to double-check. Right? So, Naples, indoor seating, 43 seats. Outdoor, 22 seats. Starbucks indoor, 30 seats. Outdoor, eight seats. And Fork &amp; Fire indoor, 80 seats. Outdoor, 12. Is that?
Correct. The owners acknowledge that and understand. Correct. So, that's what's on the record and what's already been approved based on that history. So, F was really, or F was a summary of A through E to get us those totals.
Oh, okay.
And so, that's, I just want that, that's going to be codified as part of this decision.
Okay.
Great.
Since we've had lots of pieces and parts, so.
Okay, thank you. No further issues.
Thanks, Rajah. Liz?
My one question is the other building, the realtor investment. Their ADA spots are fine and they don't need to be addressed? Or you're not going to address them at this time?
Not at this time. The focus is trying to be on the front building, I guess you could say. Yes.
Okay. Thanks. I hope that crosswalk works. How many times have we all pulled in?
Dodge cars.
Someone's walking across right there. So, thank you. I hope it works.
Thanks, Liz. Dave?
So, yeah, kind of, I may or may not go there three times a month for pizza. But, yeah. Yeah, so my concern is always, you know, and I'm driving my pickup truck and trying to navigate that parking lot and then get out. I can see why they'd be concerned about trees getting hit. It's very tight in there. And I do, I worry about pedestrians, though. The traffic flow doesn't seem awesome.
It's a, yeah, kind of a nature of a successful, you know, successful business where a lot of people want to get there. But the owner wants to do what they can to, you know, spruce it up and do some improvements at this time.
Yeah, more of a comment than a question.
Mike?
For the exterior work that's happening later, is that going to be working with the rain gardens and stuff, the water flow?
As far as I understand, for the exterior, that's aesthetic improvements. So, it's kind of, kind of just two separate animals, I guess you could say.
Okay. And I just had a question with the golf course floods, and I was just not sure if you're aware of that and how the water flow may back up or be impacted in the future with our heavy rain events we have? You got it?
I can address those.
You can address that.
Yeah, so, we are aware, obviously, of the flooding for the golf course. The site is about 10 to 15 feet higher, so that's, I referenced the embankment on this north edge. So, there's a notable elevation difference between the two. We've also, this site, the north edge of this site had been in a floodplain category. And we're in the process of reviewing new floodplain maps, which were expected to be adopted at the end of this year or early next year. And this property's been removed from any flood category.
Okay.
I think partially because of that elevation difference. So, at most, what may happen is the pipes might surcharge temporarily, but there's never been standing water in this lot.
Yeah, I haven't seen any in the park.
Correct.
Just wanted to address that.
What is a benefit, I was just discussing with my associate, is, albeit small, it is, we are proposing a small decrease in impervious area. So, if you ever have an increase in impervious area, that would increase runoff. So, albeit small, it is a decrease, so that would be a benefit to the discharge system out of this site.
Understood. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Bruce?
Just one question. I actually, first of all, thank you for your presentation, and it's going to be really nice to see this area spruced up. It's really a cornerstone for Farmington. But my question is with respect to, you know, there were 44 some odd comments. Some of the responses were, you know, sort of not strongly in the affirmative that we'll check this out or whatever. If we approve it with those conditions, does that still give you enough arm-twisting capability to meet where they go? And not that you have any kind of adverse relationship, more for my edification, we'll say.
Sure. So, particularly if you, if the condition is that the comments are addressed to town satisfaction, town staff satisfaction, which is, I believe, the typical wording that we use, then that leaves us where we need to be. But I wanted to have on record that we have, so staff has reviewed that entire response. Some of them were, yes, they need to be investigated, and we knew that. So, the ability, like I said, for the, say, the stormwater quality treatments on those existing catch basins. We don't want, we don't want the whole thing excavated and something, because we don't want any detriment to that embankment. But he has to do, the owner has to do some additional investigations of that catch basin to understand if there's enough sump to get a hood in. And if not, then we've got to go to the next thing, is a flex storm. So, some of these, the responses are, yes, we'll investigate, or yes, we will complete them. I also, given the nature of this, and it's primarily a mill and overlay and a site plan modification, if you will, didn't feel it was necessary for a whole new site plan with everything addressed prior to this evening, understanding that the scope was rather limited, so.
Yeah, and the owner is aware of, obviously, all the comments, and they're, the response predicated, they're willing to work with staff. So, as you said, it could be a condition of approval where, to the satisfaction of staff, you know, then the certificate of completeness would be issued, sort of thing.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Both. I'm fine.
All set, Bruce? Okay. Kyla?
Oh, all set. Sorry, I hit the wrong button.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kyla. Appreciate this, and I think the town is going to be happy to see improvements here in general. The plaza's gotten a little dated over the years. So, we can certainly appreciate that. Just a couple of questions for me. One is, I guess I'm curious with the water that's being, some of the water that's being resolved here. I'm not sure exactly how to ask the question, but how big a scope are we like preventing water from leaving the site? I know there's rules now, and this is sort of grandfathered, but I'm just curious how big an impact we can expect on water as a result of the changes that are happening here.
Well, yeah, so, as Shannon's kind of hovering now, those two kind of maroon beige areas, those would be pervious pavers, essentially an infiltration area. Where stormwater, as it runs onto that, what those pavers are is, you can either do kind of like the grid honeycomb pattern or an actual pavers with a little bit wider gaps in between of more of a sandy material to allow the water to kind of infiltrate in. So, those would have a capacity, so you're not going to infiltrate like a 10 or 15 or 20-year storm. But the smaller storm events, which are, you know, they call it the one-inch water quality, 90% rainfall, those should be able to be absorbed in that area, and then any excess over those, since everything's going to be kind of directed to the rain gardens, the rain gardens will then be able to sheet flow and kind of have this depressed area for a little bit more infiltration of, you know, a little bit higher storm event. But the way everything's kind of graded now, everything does kind of sheet flow towards the western. So, it's not like we can't pull anything from the west back over. So, we are trying to do what we can with these two rain gardens, kind of in the further northwest quarter. So, there's going to be breaks in those curbs, and those will be depressed to kind of accept what they can for water. So, it's like Shannon said, we're not trying to redo the entire parking lot and make massive disturbances. But I think with the owner doing what he can do to kind of spruce it up, it's, we're kind of limited to what we can do, but we're trying to find the pockets where we can make it work.
No, and I appreciate that. I was just curious for a little more detail.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit more about the lighting? And I know there were some comments in the agenda review, particularly at the crosswalks.
Yep. So, from what I understand, the two lighting right in the middle of that patio area is going to be proposed. There might be a third and fourth lights, kind of where the trees are on the north and south sides of the ADA spaces. For that, where she's hovering now, we can kind of play with that tree and kind of get a nice decorative pedestrian light over there. The tree to the south, that one kind of inadvertently is blocking a sightline for the ADA space. So, we're going to move that tree kind of a little bit further south and possibly place a light in over there. So, that little area will be spruced up a little bit more. And I believe, I believe there's two lights, completely new. Yep.
Correct.
So, the one right at the entrance, a brand-new light there, you know, to kind of illuminate the driveway itself. And then where Shannon pointed over, that kind of tertiary light, that three-way light. The positioning of it relative to the photometrics plan has to get played with a little bit, but those two lights will kind of help illuminate and kind of brighten up the area for a little bit more site safety.
Great. Yep. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any other lingering questions?
I have one comment on that new light, because that's where I was getting to, too. That new light by the entrance over there?
Sure.
I know there's a dip down in the driveway. I'm in there three times a day.
Yeah.
At night, is that going to be shielded so that people aren't blinded by the light and they don't possibly, God forbid, see somebody crossing and hit them?
Yeah.
I know the response was, plan will be revised accordingly, but that doesn't really describe.
No, I can, I can, excuse me, appreciate your concerns. But, yeah, they're always with full cutoff fixtures. We want to light up where we can. We don't want to bleed it off over the property line. So, it's always to try to get that, you know, .1 to 0-foot candles at the property line, but really focus the technology with the LED with recessed lights. It's all dark sky compliant. You know, you won't actually see the, it's kind of like these, you know, they're kind of recessed in. You're not going to see the light, but they're downcast, and they can really kind of hone in where that projection is going to be. So, you know, we have.
Streets a lot higher, so you don't want that blinding.
Right, exactly. So, you know, we have the topography with it. We can position it in the right spot and work with this photometrics team to get it right. So.
Perfect. Okay. That's good.
One other, and this might be more of a Shannon question. In the agenda review, you discussed deliveries made on premises.
Yes.
And I know, can I name names? Starbucks tractor trailer just pulls off a Route 4.
Yes.
And.
Mr. Hayes and I have quite the correspondence regarding. It's a toss-up as to whether or not that gives me more gray hair or Mr. Hayes more gray hair. So, yes.
Okay.
We're aware, and they are contacted frequently.
Okay.
And then, so, yes.
Okay.
So, again, it codifies it for the record, and we'll continue to monitor it.
Okay.
Thankfully, a lot of times, it's like Thursday at 8 o'clock. My favorite is when it's like Thursday at 5:00 PM, then I'm not such a big fan.
Yeah. I understand completely, yeah.
Yes.
So. I'm crazy. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, part of that issue is Starbucks doesn't have, right with Naples there, they don't have any rear access.
Right.
All the other spaces do, which makes that a little bit of a challenge. But nonetheless, it is something that Mr. Hayes and I frequently correspond on.
Okay.
Yes.
Anybody else? Good? Thank you very much.
All right. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Can we get a motion in a second, please?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan approval, or to grant site plan approval to Hayes Kaufman Farmington Associates LLC for patio improvements, ADA parking improvements, and repaving parking lot at 838 Farmington Avenue, including resolution of the engineering comments to the town's satisfaction.
Second. Thank you. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? Any discussion? Good? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Good luck. All right. Our second new business item is Marcel Mirinbo. I hope I pronounced that even close to right. Site plan approval for the placement of fill at 721 New Britton Avenue.
Yes, that is correct. My name is Marcel Mirinbo, owner of the 721 New Britton Avenue. And I want to put more fill to enlarge my backyard, because I have kids, you know, I have a trampoline, and they need more space to play around. And I apply for the permit. I don't know what I have to do. I mean, Shannon tells me a few things, but I don't know. What is the next step?
Okay.
Can you say something, Shannon?
Well, this is, so part of this was, this is the next step, was that this is, come here and make the formal request with the commission. So, as the agenda review noted, that this, the fill is already in place
Yep.
since September. And Ms. Mirinbo was able to contract, and we got the survey in early April. And so, I was able to put together then the agenda review for both the property owner and the commission to understand what's there versus our metric that we have to evaluate against, which is the Article 4, sorry, Article 4, Article 2, Section 24 and 22. And those are the benchmarks. Obviously, some of the items with respect to the earth excavation zone. It does note that, you know, the commission may require the submission of part or all of the information and employ some or all of the provisions found in Section 22. So, the commission has some discretion, keeping in mind just some, I guess, good engineering practices. So, section, for instance, Section 22 indicates 50-foot setbacks for the, and so if you're dealing with a 100-acre earth excavation zone, then that makes sense. And this property, obviously, it doesn't make sense. There'd be no room for fill. So, our recommendation was five-foot site swales, five-foot offsets on both sides, so that a swale could be established on the owner's property, not on the adjacent properties. Similarly, a compromise with respect to the slopes. So, rather than, it's currently installed at a 1.2 to 1 slope, so almost a 1 to 1 slope. The regulation suggests a 3 to 1 final slope. We're suggesting 2 to 1 may be appropriate here. So, that's, we used the survey, which was needed, so that we could understand that those exact limits and the exact volume of material brought in. And then we use the earth excavation zone to start to formulate some, what we hope were reasonable parameters and a reasonable compromise to what's already there to getting it to someplace that is functional for the homeowner, but also something that's maintainable and not as perhaps impactful to the adjoining residents. We have looked at it. It is, it's outside the 150 foot to the Farmington River. There is a water course to the northwest that we're kind of right at 150 feet. So, this has not gone to the Inland Wetlands Commission. It's going to reside here with this commission.
Excellent.
And then it's really, it's Ms. Mirinbo to say whether or not she's going to agree to these conditions. I had emailed it to her, and then I just, I spoke with her briefly prior to the meeting and just printed out a copy for her. So, she had a hard copy for her record. But that's for you folks to discuss and then decide whether or not these will stand as is. And then we'll have to work with Ms. Mirinbo and her contractor to get this executed. And then we'll have to work with Ms. Mirinbo and, um, her contractor to get this executed so that a final stable condition can be put in place.
Thanks, Shannon. So before I forget, Kyla, are you K filling in for Matt on this, uh, item?
Yes, I can fill in.
Thank you. Um, Shannon, you have some aerial photos, I believe, of the, of the location?
Sure. Yep. Um, so, and these had been shared with you. It's been a while, but the owner has seen these. So this first photo is from 2019 and then 2020, 2021, 2022. And this is March 23 and then August 23. So this is the, this is the fill area.
Mm-hmm.
And this location, uh, and you can see the slopes at the end. Um, and as was shown in the survey, there is a slight encroachment into the property to the south. So that's, this will get pulled back. And like I said, we're suggesting a five-foot, um, pullback so that any stormwater that drains off will formulate a channel onto her property and then come down into, um, it, it interestingly is, and I can pull the aerial up. Um, it's not even floodplain for the river. It's, it's odd how the river behaves in this, in this particular location. But, um, you can see the, the river, but it's not, um, that's not within the floodplain.
Okay. Thanks, Shannon.
Certainly.
Is there anything else you'd like to add? I can, I'll turn it over to the commissioner for questions. But before I do that, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Well, I'm doing fencing in the, in each side. So that's why I wanted to do the fill before I'm finished. Uh, Sharon says five feet. I don't know. I mean, I do it in the line with my neighbor. So I don't even have to move the fence five feet inside.
Oh, probably if you wanted it at the upper level, you would. And then the fence, we'd want a gap then at the bottom. So any stormwater runoff.
Okay.
Under, yeah, just, you know, it doesn't have to be a huge gap. It's just stormwater, but a gap under, which typically there are, you know, it's not set right on the ground anyhow. A gap.
All right, commissioners, Bob. Um, all right. So welcome.
Thank you.
I understand you went about this a little bit the wrong way, but that's all right. We'll try and figure it out.
Thank you.
Um, you mentioned the fence. Are you paying for the fence or is that being shared with the neighbor?
No, I paid for it and, um, I got scared because I see so many bears in my backyard. Even two weeks ago, all my garbage was around the, my, you know, around my backyard. That's why I want to fence the house, I mean, not the house, but it's going to be under me. Nothing to do.
You know, that's probably not going to stop your bear problem, right?
Hopefully.
They're, they're fun.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. So yeah, you're going to have to follow the guidelines with the fence.
Okay.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I guess, let me just start off by asking, what did you expect to accomplish? I know you wanted a bigger backyard, but you've gone through all this and you've put in quite a bit of land or bill. Did it, were you planning on putting more or were you pretty much maxed out at what you wanted to do?
If you want me to put more, I want to lower. Yeah. Because it's, it's straight, right? It's danger. I mean, when you stop there, you can see the big hole. So I want to label it.
But was that retention all along or did you get stopped before you could finish what you wanted to do? I guess.
I got a stop. Yeah.
Got stopped. That's what I thought. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all right. So we're going to have to work something out there.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah. Uh, I understand what you're trying to do and, you know, we all have kids. We want a place to play for the kids, but we have to do it the right way. Um, looking back at the timeline, aerial photos, with the, the one thing that caught my eye was the trees knocked down. Were those trees knocked down by you on purpose or did they, was it storm related?
Both. Both. I cut some of them and the storm.
Were they removed before you filled in or did you just cover them up with the dirt?
I covered.
So now you know in the future, they're going to rot out and you're going to have sinkholes.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Um, are you dealing, I'm, I'm assuming you're dealing with a contractor for all this?
I used to. Yeah. He, after they stopped me, he left.
Okay. So you're going to have to get somebody back in there to do everything and level it all out and then get a landscaper in there for the four inches of topsoil and the grow, the grading and all that.
Okay.
Um, and you understand what the town's asking for and you're okay working with the town and giving them play-by-plays? And you understand why they're doing the sediment control?
Yeah.
And you understand what that is, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Um, so I guess we're all on the same page here then.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I start because, um, one person at the town, I was in my house. It was my ex-wife. He was dumping dirt, I mean, fill and he didn't say nothing. That's why I keep doing it. I didn't know I needed a permit, but.
Right, right. Most people try and sneak it away. All right. Not a problem. Um, then I'm going to leave it like that. If you are working with the town and the town has a somewhat good working relationship so far, they've been pretty adaptable.
We'll get there.
Okay. All right. Then I have no other questions. Scott, I'm good.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Uh, no questions. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks.
Liz?
Um, no, I, I think Bob asked my questions. I, I'm glad to see an aerial, uh, a recent aerial because the, that just, that is a very abrupt edge. It is more cliff-like than any sort of grading and that gets me concerned with kids.
Yeah.
So I'm really hoping that we will be, you, you can work on rectifying that. Cause that's, that's, doesn't look good. And I also don't know how the bank would stay and it would end up in the back further down the hill, which no one wants. So, um, I'm glad to hear that you're working with the town and I hope we can solve this problem.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, I would say the same thing. And also the thing about the bears, I have a fence around my yard and bears climb, right?
How you-
Without thinking giant bears on my pad, on my deck. Yeah.
Where there's a wall, there's a way, right?
Yeah.
There's garbage.
And I, and also, and you know, our concern is, you know, it's also for your safety, but also for the neighbors and what could do to their properties. We're going to be careful.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kyla?
Yeah, I feel like, um, all my questions were answered and I'm agreeing with the sentiment of what everybody's saying as far as the edge looking really defined. And then the concern of bears. I've had bears visit my home a couple of times too with cubs and it's, it's, uh, daunting to say the least. But, um, but yeah, all my questions were answered.
Thank you, Kyla. Bruce?
So, uh, just, just for, for complete clarification, so you're going to have a professional contractor do the grading and, you know, remove that cliff and make a slope and pull that five back? That has been agreed to with town?
Yep.
And then how are you, uh, top coating that? Are you going to put sod?
Topsoil.
Seed?
Yeah, and seed. Yeah.
Uh, hydro spray?
No, seed.
Seed. Well, it'll take, it'll take a while. So it's got to be, you know, done in such a way that, you know, rains or anything doesn't undo the grading that's been, been done. So you, you do need a, you know, professional-
Okay.
Job on this.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. I'm good then.
Thanks, Bruce. Mike?
No questions.
Okay. Appreciate you coming in tonight. I, I think, feel like I have a little bit better of an idea of how we ended up in this place. Um, and we've learned that we all have bear stories if we live in Farmington. So that's, that's important. Um, yeah, we all do guaranteed.
The river is on the back, so.
I guess I just want to ask again, again, I, I understand how we got to this place. I, I feel like what the town is offering and the items for consideration, I believe you have a copy of it, is like way more than reasonable, given that this was done without coming to the town first. And again, I understand why. So you're, I just want to confirm again that you're okay with the stipulations here and in working with Shannon and her team.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have?
No.
Nope. Questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
You too.
So Shannon, we don't need to include these items for consideration or we do in the motion?
Oh, yes, please.
All, want us to read through all of them?
Or you can say as itemized in the agenda, items one through 10. If we're going to stand as-
All right. That's what I wanted to make.
Say items one through 10 from the agenda review. Oh, yes, please.
Yes. All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Make a motion. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan submitted by Marcel Mirinbo for the placement of fill at 721 New Britain Avenue. The stipulation that the project follow all the items for consideration, one through 10 and the guidance of the town planning office.
Second.
Any discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. You're gone. All right. We have one public hearing this evening. And I just want to mention a few sort of guidelines and how that process will work. Um, so we'll ask the applicant to present to the commission. We'll ask questions like you've seen so far. Uh, we'll then open to public comment. We'll have those in the room first and then anybody that might be online, Shannon, will help out with. Um, and then once all the public comment has been received, we'll ask the applicant to respond at the end to all the public comment questions and such. Um, that you, please, please keep your, uh, comments limited to five minutes during public comment. Uh, and if your comments echo those of any previous speakers, it's okay to just acknowledge that in your comments rather than restate and we only bring up the guidelines as a way to, to manage all of our time, both your time as the public and ours as commissioners is valuable. Um, we're all volunteers here. But at the same time, public comment is so important. Public comment is important. So, um, enough of my little soapbox there on the, on the, uh, public comment. But, um, I'm going to ask Bruce, will you sit in for Matt on this particular hearing?
I will.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you. And so I think that's all of the business. So the actual hearing is Noreen Galvin, application for special permit for detached accessory dwelling unit above existing detached garage at 162 Wood Pond Road, R20 Zone. Who do we have, Shannon?
I believe we have John Galvin.
Okay.
Noreen's brothers on the phone to present the application. John, if you could unmute the microphone.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Uh, yep.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Good evening. Uh, thank you, Shannon. Um, I, I, I think the Shannon's agenda pretty much summarizes it pretty well. Um, we're looking to take what is already a finished space above the detached garage and convert it to an ADU, something that's been recently, uh, approved by the town. Uh, we did go through, uh, ZBA, uh, to approve the placement of the, uh, ADU. And during that meeting, uh, we, uh, agreed to, uh, make a few changes, um, to accommodate the neighbors', um, concerns about privacy. Uh, so for example, uh, the plan may show a window facing the neighbor and there's also a deck there. Um, so we basically have changed the plans to remove that window and remove the deck. Um, I think that shouldn't be a problem. If it is a problem, then we would agree to put in 50 feet of privacy, either vegetation or a fence. Uh, I think otherwise the ADU meets all of the usual regulations. We're working with Farmington Valley Health District on, uh, I guess, expanding the current, uh, septic system. So thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you. I will turn it over for questions. Bobby? I drove by the property today because I was kind of confused at which one it was. And I guess I got a better understanding of it. So it's the one in front closest to the street with the new window being installed. Is that correct?
Yes. Correct.
Um, and you're currently using it as a yoga studio and you're converting it?
No, I, I'm not sure. The history was definitely a finished space, probably at least probably 50 years ago. And, um, I'm not exactly sure what prior owners have been used the space for. Uh, I've heard yoga. I've heard music studio, uh, music lessons. I, I'm, I'm not sure. But it was a finished heated space, insulated, et cetera. So everything's, everything's the code, but it does need a, a kitchen and bathroom, uh, to meet ADU standards.
Right. So you're putting in the kitchen and bathroom and you're going through the health district for your current septic system for that?
Correct.
Okay. Um, what about parking? Are you providing parking in the garage or what? Where are these people parking?
Well, there is, uh, the, the garage, of course, will maintain its three spots below. Uh, there's also, uh, at least three, probably four spots in front of the ADU. There's a parking pad there.
Okay. So there will be no on parking then, what I'm trying to get.
Uh, no, no, no. We only anticipate, uh, eventually this is for, uh, Noreen's partners, Michelle's mom. And as I've mentioned before, um, senior citizens don't always move when they're supposed to move. So we want to get a jump on this and have it ready for when she gets to that point where, you know, she really needs, uh, to be taken care of. Uh, and I hope that's a long time. Uh, but in the meantime, we would like to rent it to sort of, you know, help with the cost of, uh, doing the renovation. But we anticipate one person and there's four spots, so.
All right. Um, yeah, I'm good for your rate. Okay. Thanks, Bob. Rosa?
Uh, just, uh, thank you, Mr. Gavin. Yeah, Gavin, um, for your presentation. Uh, for the rental, is, is it going to be an Airbnb type or, um, like a permanent?
Uh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the first part.
So, uh, the, you, your, uh, your aim is to rent the, the, the place. Is it, uh, like Airbnb type of rent or?
No. No. The, the regulations forbid, uh, anything other than long-term rentals. We wouldn't have an interest in Airbnb anyway, but we certainly wouldn't be allowed to do that under regs.
Thank you. That is nice.
Uh, okay. I, I got in with my friend, Mr. St. Tremaine here, figured out some of the pictures. I just wasn't quite sure what I was looking at. And, um, so the access to the building will be from the garage side, from the apartment? Is it going to be the garage side or the?
No. I, Shannon, do we have a, a photo? There you go.
Okay.
So as you come in from Wood Pond Road, um, if you were to, if we were pulling back more, you, or this photo, for example, is probably taken from the parking pad, which is about four, at least four cars. So you just walk up that path and in that door.
Okay. Very logical for a, a senior citizen. Okay. Couple of steps. That's good. Okay. Um, I, I think, I think that is the, all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm trying to picture where you, I, this is actually on my walking route with my dog. So I go by this house a lot. Um, yeah. And then you just, it was just purchased, what, year or two ago? Is that right?
Couple of years. Yeah.
Yeah. Where would that, that fence go that we're talking about or the screen that we're talking about?
So in that, in that, uh, what you can't see here because of rhododendron, is there that deck that you walk up onto for the entrance that wraps around the whole house on both sides and facing the lake? Uh, the neighbors were concerned that, um, a, a tenant might, uh, decide to use that side of the deck that faces their property. That's the yellow property. That's the moors. And so we decided, um, probably, I think because of the, uh, the slope of the property, I'm not sure that vegetation would work. So, yeah. So if you're looking here on this photo, that deck that goes along there, that's repeated on the other side. That's the side that's of concern. Our plan showed a window, uh, facing the moors and that deck remaining. Uh, what we'll almost certainly do is, uh, remove that deck and, uh, rework the plan so there is no window, uh, facing the, um, the moors property.
Okay. And then above, you're building above that little, little left-hand garage. Is that correct? From this picture, we're looking- And then you're building above that little left hand garage, is that correct from this picture we're looking at? Because there's not an addition again?
Not it, not it. So the the third bay to the left. Yeah, that's, nothing's happening there. It's 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 five hundred square feet. It's very just the existing space, no additional footprint.
Okay. All right, no other questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Bruce?
Hi, Mr. Galvin. I've been following along with your presentation and thank you for that. But and you've been talking about this window and deck you're removing. And when I look at the schematics, I can't figure out which one it is because there's these double sliding doors and four windows. That's not the side you're talking about, is it?
Uh, no. So if you, at this plan, if you see what a bedroom is?
Yes.
So that's the left side of the plan is what we're referencing. That window and the bathroom window, we're going to rearrange the bathroom a little bit. I'm sorry, haven't had time to redo the plan. And the window from the bedroom, those won't exist. We'll have the bathroom window facing front. And that'll be it. So the means of egress and light and everything else will be facing the lake in the sliders and those windows.
Got it. Thank you. I understand now.
Okay.
Um, I'm also, Mike?
For the garages, are you planning on parking cars in the garage or is that going to be used as a storage space? I believe in the appeals, neighbors were concerned about car lights on in the morning, if I remember.
Yeah, the actual, the Pat and Jeff, if I may use their first names, were concerned that when people pull into our parking pad, so we're way, we're way back up on top now by the road, that the lights shown in their windows. And then, of course, to exacerbate things, we, Noreen and Michelle, allowed the neighbors on the other side to use that parking pad when it had some overflow for a party. And one of their guests left their blinkers on, so that was, I can appreciate that would be annoying. But we we've had, I believe, Noreen and Michelle have had a discussion with the Moors and agreed to, well, first of all, they don't use that very much. They just pull down into the garage. But, you know, if there's a heavy snowstorm and it's hard to get down into the garage, then we do use that spot and the new tenant will have to use that spot. So eventually, well, for now, we just came to an agreement that we'll just be considerate and back in rather than pulling it, so there's no light shining.
Okay. Thank you.
Kyla?
I didn't have any further questions.
Okay, thanks, Kyla. And I don't have any questions at the moment, so we'll we'll open it to the public at this point, if there's anybody in the room. I think the two of you, the only ones in the room, please step up to the podium, introduce yourself and address, please, name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Moores. We're at one fifty-two, which is the property adjacent. I'm glad that Mr. Galvin clarified because he kept saying that they would remove one window, and indeed, there are two that need to be removed. I don't know that we came to any agreement on the on the parking. We did have discussions, and I will say that they have been considered up till now. I don't really know how the prospective tenants will be parking, so it is still a concern. But that's not really why I'm here this evening. My main concern at this point, and we did not bring it up the last meeting because we were led to believe that drainage would be a subject that we should bring up at this meeting, and that's what I'd like to address now. These properties are, they've got about a twenty-five to thirty foot drop on a roughly a three to one or four to one. So as you can imagine, drainage is a problem, particularly with one sixty-two. There's a lot of impervious surfaces. The studio has a relatively large roof, and it's a pretty good sized garage. None of the drainage that I can tell from the studio and none from the garage are sequestered. It's all redirected, but it's still groundwater runoff. And that's been a problem for some time, which we've kind of got Nikki Sikorski, the original tenant, to fix with, you know, duct tape and chewing gum, but it 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 works passably well. There is a trench drain at the bottom of the driveway, which grabs all the water from the driveway and runs it through, I guess, a six inch pipe down along our property. That property is sloped towards ours. We have had some relief by putting in a small berm there. But the original arrangement was in this sort of retention pond, which was a retention pond in name only. It went about a foot deep and it was no more than five feet in diameter, which, when you're draining a driveway of that size, was inadequate. We prevailed on Nikki to extend the pipe further down along the property. So now the pipe goes out to probably within ten or twelve feet of the lake. So the water gets dumped directly into the lake with very little buffer to absorb it. This isn't quite so much a problem, excepting now with a commercial rental, we will have additional cars. I do expect that they will be up top. And cars tend to be dirty. You know, they'll track in salt and sand. You'll get oil, you'll get antifreeze. Hopefully, the new tenants won't get the idea of washing their cars and God forbid changing their oil on the driveway, but it is a possibility. That water is going to flow into the lake, you know, anything that's on the driveway, it's all impervious. What we would like to see is that water to be sequestered into like either a French drain or a dry well, so that it at least has, you know, some footage to filter out those contaminants. And as I say, right now, I think all the downspouts just run out onto the ground. I know on the south side, they run right onto the lawn. I think the reason Nikki put in the trench drain is because it was washing down around his house. But it hasn't really been dealt with in a permanent situation. And with the automobiles and the contamination from them is going to make it worse. We did, I did talk with Maureen, Noreen, rather, and Michelle, and we did discuss the drainage, so this won't be a big surprise to them. That's pretty much it. We've lived at our house since nineteen ninety-three, and I can tell you drainage is a real, is a real problem because the the water gains some velocity and it just starts washing things out. We've dealt with it by, you know, terracing and any of the drains that come off of our buildings go directly into the ground, and that that's helped quite a bit, but it's still a bit of an ongoing fight. So I would ask that that be an additional consideration if you do decide to allow this, that they need to deal with the drainage more effectively. I think that's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments. Shannon, do you have anybody online?
I'll check. If anyone has called in online to offer comment regarding the application at one sixty-two Wood Pond, please raise your hand and you'll be acknowledged by the commission, acknowledged to address the commission. Mr. Chair, Matt Hut Wagner has called in. You should be able to unmute your microphone and please name an address for the record.
Hey, Shannon, can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Hey, Shannon, hey, commissioners. My name is Matt Hut Wagner. I live at Ford Deepwood Road. It's good to be in front of you this evening. I'm here to voice my support for this project. I think it meets all the requirements for a special permit here in Farmington. It fits the character of the neighborhood. It's an existing structure, so there's really no change in the footprint of the property. Sounds like reasonable accommodations and conditions will be placed on this permit, which I I think is good, and I agree, everyone's sort of getting along. And and as most of you know, a detached accessory dwelling unit like this is part of Farmington's Affordable Housing Plan, right? A plan that this commission spent many hours trying to implement, and we passed and updated zoning regs to be able to do something like this. So here's a permit that we can actually put that plan into action. So again, I'm here to support the project and I urge all of you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else has called in regarding one sixty-two Wood Pond, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission with any questions or concerns. One more time, if anyone's called in to offer comment regarding one sixty-two Wood Pond, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address the commission. Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised.
Thanks, Shannon. Mr. Galvin, would you like to respond to any of the comments?
Yeah, I I would just like to back up and say that, you know, we did purchase this property and I don't know the exact date. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it's almost two years. And you can see the main property was in horrible shape and lots of runoff from the hill behind it. We took about a year. We've gotten very, very good feedback from most, well, certainly the other neighbors and the Lake Association on how sensitive we were to the lake. Didn't expand the footprint of the house, spent a tremendous amount of money to keep it looking like a nice lake house, not build a McMansion. The second phase was to do all of the terracing behind the house so that water didn't rush down. This, I guess, is phase three to put this in place so that it's ready for when Michelle's mom is ready. And again, I I thought it was a pretty good accommodation to the Moors in taking that deck down and revising the plans. I mean, usually, a neighbor's concern for privacy is is their issue, and they put up a fence or they put up plantings. But I was going to argue that point, so we said, okay, we'll make the accommodations. We also do have a problem with runoff. If you can see those steps that come down, that gray line that comes down between the garage and the house, the water comes, yep, that's it, the water comes down there pretty good. So phase four or five, I've lost track, is to take care of that issue. One of the reasons we have not taken care of that issue and the issue of runoff that the Moors also, and I appreciate they did a nice job in putting in steps, is that until we figure out the septic needs, it it makes no sense to work in those areas. The septic tanks are about in the area, and the pump chamber are in that area. I don't know if we have to move those, enlarge the leaching field to that area. This makes no sense to address that runoff until we enlarge the septic system. I I don't know what to say about, you know, that that house is built in a parking pad to have up to four or five cars. You know, I I just don't know how much runoff and salt you would get from a car that would affect the lake. I I think I think that's really, really a stretch, quite frankly. Sorry if you hear the frustration in my voice. But we're trying to be as accommodating and neighborly as possible. And anyway, let let me just say that if I I I don't think, I I cannot see how the Moors' concern for runoff has anything to do with this apartment since it's not creating any runoff. We're not changing the footprint, we're not changing the roof lines. We are certainly interested in addition, nobody cares about the lake more than us. We're certainly planning to take care of that runoff. But little patience and consideration, I I think is in place, too. We also are entitled to, you know, enjoyment of our property and, you know, we'll get it done. We want to take care of the runoff, too. I I don't know what to say about the runoff, the extra runoff if there's one car when it's entitled to be four. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin. Commissioners, any additional questions? Name and address, please.
Sure. Hi, I'm Dave Lekowski and I'm a, live at twenty-eight Mountain Road. And and what I would basically say is it's more from a perspective of how these things get developed, right? So I think even in the applicant before and even this standing applicant today, I think what you're going to find, even as this, I think this very robust ADU provision is is great for for our, the ability to add housing in a, in a, in a place where there's a dire need for housing, right? But I think this is a perfect example of of a property that really should maybe have a comprehensive plan for the commission to evaluate, because there's other phases to come. And 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 really, it's hard to evaluate something right now when there's other things that still have to be, like, kind of put into place. And I think the current owner is absolutely correct. I'm not saying he won't get it done. He sounds like, you know, they're committed to getting the whole thing comprehensively developed, but there, the septic system isn't figured out right now, right? And that will have an impact in a physical way to what happens, you know, on this site. Similarly to like the last applicant, the same type of thing, she kind of get a, she kind of got ahead of her skis. And now you don't have a comprehensive, kind of proactive way to get into the, into this project. You're actually now kind of reassessing something after the fact, right? So I think that's just my comment here, and I I'm just an observer to the process. But I think as we get further into the ADU regulations, this is going to be a critical thing, right? Because I think it, I think that's maybe an upfront cost. It could be a hard cost, right? Survey, maybe some some architectural engineering input. But at the end of the day, Shannon's staff gets a more comprehensive picture. And I think you maybe take some of the unknowns that adjacent properties might have, and you kind of maybe can put that to rest earlier than later. So I think it's just a matter of, as we emerge into this new area, it's it's more, maybe we need more information, you know, in the in the initial phases as as you folks discern and make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Why don't we do sort of a pulse check? I'm kind of curious where everybody is with this process. Bobby?
So starting with me, I, you know, everybody knows how I feel about housing in town and going slow. But we did put a lot of time into the ADU building plan that we had worked on. And, you know, I'm agreeing with John here. I mean, it's it's an existing building. It's not like where he's putting up a second floor. He's not adding on. He's basically repurposing the same footprint in the same spot he's got into a rental unit. You know, and it's a five hundred and seventy square foot rental unit, which isn't going to hold more than one person. So you're probably only going to get one car. The runoff, yeah, it's a problem, but it's not a problem that's being created. It's a problem that's already there. And as far as the septic tank goes, I mean, we could approve this and Health District could say you don't have the room for it. We're not approving it, and it's a moot point anyway. So, you know, I guess, long story long, I don't have a problem with this.
Okay.
I agree with Bob.
Okay, Liz? Okay, Liz?
I'm right, I'm, I concur and I'm on the same thought process. The ADU. Uh, regulations were very well thought out and tried to handle everything and. Since this is not any new freestanding, but, and no additions to an existing building, no new building. I, I, I think it's, it meets the requirements.
Dave?
Everybody said what I would say.
Okay. You did what that's, okay. Bruce?
Um, I think I, I'll add up with my fellow commissioners, if I could borrow a term from the medical industry, the, the drainage issue is a pre-existing condition.
Yeah.
And, and we ought not to hold this up because of the pre-existing condition.
Okay.
I agree that it needs to be dealt with and, you know, as Dave was talking about, there should be a comprehensive plan and the owners agree to that, but. I, I don't see that this should be standing in the way of any of that.
Kyla?
Uh, no, no further questions.
Okay, thank you. I, I tend to be in the same place and certainly sensitive to the water issues that you're dealing with, but I don't. Know that this application is changing that in any substantial way. Um, so I just, I'm gonna did all the rest of the commission, um, on, on your comments and I appreciate the thoughtfulness of those. Just one more check. Any questions for Mr. Galvin before we close the public hearing? Good. Okay, gonna close the public hearing. Um, I need a motion in a second, please.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application of Noreen Galvin. For a special permit for detached accessory dwelling unit above existing detached garage. At one six-two Wood Pond Road with an R twenty in an R twenty zone.
A little second. Okay, everybody clear on what we're voting on?
Yes.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any planners report, Shannon?
We do. Um, I had mentioned that there might be something for a sign. Not a sign, because the sign I thought we had is gonna have to go to the Farmington Historic District. Um, but instead I have our Westwoods pickleball courts. So you'll recall that um, our director of public works, Russ Arnold, and our civil engineer, right, um. Dylan Riley were here uh, just a month ago.
Yep.
Discussing uh, set pickleball courts and uh, splash pad, et cetera. Uh, additional funding came in and we are in the position, um, through efforts of uh. Mr. Slapp and Mr. D'Amico. Um, so we're thankful certainly to them, but uh. Additional funding's in and we are going to be able to construct eight pickleball courts rather than four. So uh, this is the plan that had been uh, reviewed and approved with the commission a month ago. And this is the revised plan and uh. Dylan's been busy uh, fine tuning a few things for us as well. So the west edge of the pickleball court or plan left has slid. To the right. This whole thing shifted to the right. Uh, there was a conflict with a utility pole and. Needing clearances for future lights, we recall. So still, any lighting of this is future. We are accommodating for conduit and foundation and doing that now, but the lights. Um, I have asked for information, but the lights are not permitted and nor are they going to be installed as part of this. Um, but it slid and there's a sidewalk here on the west edge. And then a sidewalk that's gonna come all the way around the north edge and uh, over here on the east edge. So that there's access, basically full access on three sides. There's gates, kind of swing gates here through. Um, I know there's a gate on this side. I'm. I imagine he's gonna have a gate somewhere here on this side so that in order to get to the far courts, you're not walking through. The other six. So, um, but that's what we've, what we're looking at. So there's an additional two hundred thousand dollars that came in. There's some additional funds for work at the uh. The clubhouse itself. So, um, so it's kind of a nice surprise to be able to go ahead and get. All eight courts in at this particular point in time. So again, it was schematically shown as part of the original drawing. Few things that have modified so that we can, as I said, avoid some utility conflicts and make sure. What it amounted to is where we need to have the light pole versus where the existing utility lines are coming in. There's certain clearance distance. That's um, required. So there isn't um, an electrocution hazard. So.
Always a good.
So we're gonna go ahead and make sure that all those spacings are, are in place appropriately. So that's uh, that's the genesis of that, that, that's really what caused the shift to the, to the east. And then of course, then those courts are, are gonna come into fruition. So. Uh, unless the commission feels otherwise, I was gonna tell them, like, just go ahead. Like I said, it had been on the plan and marked as future now. The future is just now instead of five years from now.
Change how you're gonna deal with.
We have an E T and completion on those?
An E T completion? Uh, I do not. Um, I think this, the pickleball courts are out for bid. I know they're working on the, the clubhouse or the bathhouse, if you will, um, in between. So foundations, I believe, were excavated this weekend. They've, they've got the crews working. Um, or at the end of last week and into this week. So, but the, the foundations are being excavated. We're doing um, that work. And then we're contracting out the buildings being shipped in. So buildings being come in uh, and then erected. So. And then each phase, so they're gonna, I think it's being bid in three parts. So the splash pad, the building and the pickleball courts. Cause they're kind of different specialties too.
So not this summer?
Uh, a- at this point, I don't believe so. Whether or not they'd be done in time for fall play, uh, probably. Um, but I, I don't know the exact timing of the pickleball courts.
So change how you're gonna deal with water and runoff and all that?
Uh, it, it doesn't really. So it's all gonna pitch. So some of this is gonna pitch uh, into the field and. It doesn't, uh, all the drainage calculations that Dylan had done and assumed that that was going to be. Built out. So the trench drains on both the west and north ends. Were all designed to accommodate. And I think a portion of this, there might be a little bit of a crown. At this and this might drain out into the field anyhow and just soak into the, the field area. So.
And we're sure it's not a passing fad, pickleball?
Dave, I had the same questions, trust me.
It certainly does not seem that way. I think it's uh, gonna stick around. Tennis and Wimbledon have been around for. Quite a few uh, years, probably a hundred years. I don't, I don't even know, but yeah, it's uh.
We could hold pickled in here.
We.
You know tennis elbow? Now they have pickleball.
There you go.
Okay, how do we move on from this, Shannon?
I think uh, hopefully quickly. So if we're good, then um, I'm just gonna tell the fellows, just keep going and I'm assuming no site plan modification. A formal application isn't required. So I just wanted to provide an update for you folks.
Thank you.
Uh, and that's all I have for planner's report.
Wow.
Any questions for Shannon?
Nope.
This thing burning. Nope.
Nope.
All right. Wow, you got it off easy tonight, Shannon. I'm having it too.
I'll take it.
I got it. It's right there.
I thought you were getting excited.
I am getting excited, but approve the minutes of the April twenty-second and a motion in a second, please.
I move that we accept the, approve the minutes of the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four Town P and Z Commission meeting.
Second?
All in favor? Aye, opposed. Meeting is adjourned.